Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Phillips. I'm the moderator for the evening. And I would like to thank all of the candidates for joining us this evening. Which is a forum for Morehead School Board hosted by the League of Women Voters. This forum is being recorded by Morehead Community Access TV to be played back at a later time. And a recording will be posted to the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley Facebook page. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. We want to thank the Lake Agassiz Regional Library for providing us the space tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. If you would like to learn about the League, please visit our website or find us on Facebook. The League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. As a nonpartisan organization, the League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Before we begin, I'd like to review the rules and procedures. Questions have been submitted in advance by the public on index cards for this event. Questions may have been screened for clarity or combined with similar questions. All candidates will be given an opportunity to address each question that's asked. The candidates in this forum and the one immediately after are all running for the Morehead School Board. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening remark. Each will then be allowed one minute to respond to each question from the audience. At the conclusion of the Q&amp;A period, candidates will be given another one minute for their closing remarks. A timer, Deborah, will indicate how much time is remaining and will indicate when your time is done. When you hear the buzzer, (bell) the bell, that means your time has expired. Please complete your sentence or thought so that we may move on to the next candidate. The League of Women Voters is proud to provide candidate forums as a platform for voters to learn about who will be on their ballot. The League has invited all candidates on the ballots in contested races to participate in the candidate forums we host. If a candidate is not able to attend, they are welcome to write a one-minute statement that we will read at the forum to the public on their behalf. There was one candidate who was not able to attend this particular forum. That is Marissa Ollering. And I am going to now read her opening statement, and then we will proceed down the line here. "My name is Marissa Ollering, and I moved to Morehead five years ago with my husband and two daughters who both attend Morehead Public Schools. I regret that I am unable to join the forum this evening as I am traveling for work. I have my doctorate in biology and am the lead scientist for the Nature Conservancy in the region. I am motivated to serve as a member of the school board by my passion for learning and my desire to see all our children receive an education that sets them up for success. As a school board member, I would be dedicated to furthering the district's steps towards integrating diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of school operations. I would also be focused on making Morehead schools a supportive workplace for teachers. Attracting and retaining good teachers is vital to student success, community success, and teacher well-being. Finally, a school board member's job is to make decisions that are within the best interests of all the students and staff. As a scientist, I am trained in how to make informed decisions. I am good at asking questions, gathering evidence, listening to people, and feedback, and paying close attention to details. Education has always been important to me and my family, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 8th." We will now move to the next opening statement by Lori Lee.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting and Morehead Community Access TV for recording this debate so it can be accessible to all those who wish to be informed. Thank you to all of you who came out tonight to participate in our democracy. I am Lori Lee Bergen. Seventeen years ago, I bought my home in Morehead so my children could attend Morehead Public Schools. I am a proud 5th grade teacher in Fargo. It is my combined passion for public education and the city of Morehead that brings me here tonight. I'm running for a seat on the school board. Public education has been under attack for quite some time, and teachers are leaving the field at record rates. We are altruists. We believe in caring for others so deeply that we have put our own needs aside. We need to take better care of our teachers and staff so we can maintain providing high-quality education to all students. I believe in equity and inclusion, and I was dismayed to discover that Morehead Public Schools was one of a handful in Minnesota who do not meet the state's standards in this area."
Thank you. Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and being part of the process and learning about each of the candidates here. And thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Lisa Han, and the reason why I'm running is last summer I saw how the voice of parents was suppressed, and I really want to be a voice for the parents in this community and make sure that your voice is at the front of the conversations, not the back. A little bit about me. I grew up in Minneapolis, graduated from the University of North Dakota, and used music, studied music therapy. And I taught English overseas and used music in my teaching and saw how that accelerated the learning process and increased social skills and decreased behaviors in the classroom. So I would like to integrate more music and art into the education system in our school to engage our students more. And I also developed what's called musical bridges, connecting our community through music. So it's a music circle, all are welcome, and this is a way to address the racial concerns in our community in a way that's positive and unifying. And when we can play well together, we can work well together. When we can work well together, we can live well together.
Thank you, Lisa. Scott.
Hi, my name is Scott Castorres, and obviously I'm running for Morehead School Board. I want to echo the thanks that have already been shared for everyone that's taking part tonight, and also to the other candidates running for school board. I like what Lori Lee said about, you know, just being altruists and being just people with a background of giving. I'm not a teacher, but I've been in law enforcement for 22 years. It's a profession you don't get into without, you know, wanting to give back. And we have other teachers and retired military, and we have people that are willing to give back to their community. So thank you for those other candidates that are willing to put themselves out there. I'm a father of three. I have three children, two of whom are in Morehead Schools right now. One at the high school, one in the middle school, and one that just graduated last year. Been in the police office, like I said, for 22 years. Twelve years as a patrol sergeant and investigation sergeant, and also as our SRO supervisor. So I have kind of a working knowledge of the safety aspect of Morehead Schools, and that's what I would like to focus on with my candidacy and if elected, that's what I would like to focus on in some of the issues I'd like to address tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Ken.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ken. I'm retired. I've served 22 years in the U.S. Postal Service. I spent 10 years on active duty in the United States Air Force, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. I married to my beautiful wife, Lois, for almost 50 years now, and we've been living here in Morehead now for 40 of those years. We have four grown children. They're all Morehead Spud alumni, and they blessed us with 20 wonderful grandchildren. I've always had a keen interest in education and schools and in public policy in general. As such, I've served in leadership in four different political parties. I currently cast myself as a constitutional conservative. I've served as a vice president of the local mail handlers union. In the past, I served on several school district committees as a citizen rep. In 1987, the then-Morehead Education Association, they recognized me as the outstanding layperson in education. Since 2006, I have volunteered for Open Doors 65. It's a nonprofit organization that is serving those in need in our community, and I'm ready to serve you now as a director for the school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David.
Thank you. Yes, I'd also like to thank everyone involved for tonight and get an opportunity for us to speak our opinions and what we're going to be running for for Morehead School Board. My wife and I moved to Morehead 17 years ago. We have three children as well. One graduated last, this spring, and is at Morehead State. And I have a junior and one at the middle school as well. I've committed my entire career, my life, to public education. I was a public school teacher for 21 years, and now I'm an advocate for public education throughout North Dakota. My degrees are elementary education and well as education leadership. So I've spent many years advocating and being out for teachers, for support staff, and everything else. So I'm also involved as I'm the president of Morehead Crush Fast Pitch, as well as on the advisory board for Morehead Parks and Rec. So I think it's important also to be a part of the community, and this is also why I'm interested in running for the for the school board.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to the audience question portion of the forum. And I'm going to start with a question with some sub-questions related to teachers because there are several questions that have to do with teachers. So you can feel free to address any of these questions as you want. Couple of the, two or three of the questions had to do with how to attract and retain qualified teachers, how to address teacher burnout. And then there's a question about many teachers not getting the prep time or lunchtime that they should have according to their contract. They're putting in many more hours than they should be according to their contract. Should they be paid more? So it's a combination set of questions. How do we attract? How do we prevent burnout? How do we acknowledge them in the work that they're doing? And Lisa, you're first.
Okay. That's quite the question there. I would really like to talk with the teachers. I always like to have that personal connection and hear where they are with this issue. And I think just having activities that unite the community, so having the teachers and the families come together so that there's opportunities for them to communicate and also have fun. Bring families together, and then that helps the teachers too because the teachers can bring their families. So just really increasing the communication through community activities and have like teacher appreciation dinners, teacher appreciation events, to really show support for our teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Scott.
It's a lot to pack into one minute, but I think if you, you know, combine them all together and just come down to taking care of your people. I think with a focus as a school board of making sure that, obviously, we want students first, that's why, you know, we have our school system. But in order to take care of the students, you need to take care of those that are taking care of the students. So I would put a very high emphasis on making sure that our teachers feel wanted, that they feel appreciated, and that their voices are being heard and they're getting what they need. I've been a union steward with our LALS union, both as a police officer and then also with our supervisor group for, probably should have done the math, but I think 12 of the last 22 years I've been union steward, working with the city of Morehead with our contract negotiations. So I do know how frustrating that process can be and how much goes into that. So with that background, I would make sure that all stakeholders are being heard and that, you know, all voices involved can address the issues that have been brought forward to this panel today because they're all very good questions and need to get addressed.
Thank you. Ken.
In any job, communication is always very important. So if I were on the board, I would want to be able to communicate with any of the staff, the teaching staff, and any other staff that we employ at the school district, and listen to what their concerns are, and try my best to resolve those concerns in a manner consistent with the facts at hand. As far as burnout goes, I think there's some contributing factors to that. My daughter is a school teacher, and this year she came home and she said, "Dad, you know, I'm not going to teach next year." I said, "Why not?" Discipline, she's had so much trouble disciplining the children. And she said, "I just can't teach in that environment." So I think it's important to have a good discipline policy in the schools and have it being enforced in a uniform fashion so that the teachers don't have to fight against the students because, you know, students are kids, they'll get away with. I was a student once, and I used to get away with whatever I could, too. As far as, oh, okay.
Okay. David.
Yeah, this is definitely one of the top issues in public education right now. I think it's important, I've worked with several locals getting into their contract, that their prep time is actually in this contract, so it ensures that they are getting their time because that is such a valuable time for teachers. It's really the only time they get to prepare, plan for the next lesson, plan for the next day, and those things because they're teaching throughout the rest of the day. So it's vital that that is being honored, and the contract and negotiations is a vital part to ensure those things happen. Obviously, I think a lot of decisions have been taken away from teachers as well and support staff. It's being done by administrators or people outside, potential legislators, and I think getting the teachers involved in those decisions will be really important. And then the last thing, I think it's also caseloads, classroom size as well. I think the biggest burnout are special ed teachers because of the high demands of paperwork, the demands of their caseloads and what's required of them. It has to change, and we have to make a better change for those teachers as well so they can have time to teach, other than everything else that's being involved with their job right now.
Thank you. Lori Lee.
Yes, I think David made great points, especially when it comes to special ed teachers. I think they are, they have an enormous amount of paperwork for the students that are on their caseload to attract and retain. So I think that a strong administration that is supportive and hands-on, seen in the building, seen around the building, seen solving problems, is very important. Meaningful professional development, where we feel like we are going to professional development with purpose, and we are coming out actually learning new ways to solve problems. We need to address the mental health of students and staff. For prep and lunch, too often, meetings are scheduled over our preps and lunches. This happens all the time. We should be getting paid additional funds for attending meetings outside contract hours or over those preps or lunches because we still have to make up that prep time. Teachers need to maintain their own lunch. If that means locking yourself in your classroom, do it. It is for your own mental health.
Okay. Thank you. The next question will start with Scott as the first person to answer. And that question is, "There are many students who have barriers which prevent their access to education. How can the district increase providing equitable education for all students in the
Well, it starts with, a lot of us have already mentioned, just bringing in all the stakeholders in the community and with the school, and just listening. You know, the biggest part of being a member of a governing body is knowing that you don't know it all and being willing to take the advice and the counsel of those that are aware. I think Morehead does, they do a good job with addressing these issues, but I think, like anything else, there's more that can be done. One of the things that I liked, that I got involved with, in 2017, we started a Police Athletics League, which is a nonprofit that connects law enforcement officers with students in the community that have needs. We do our shop with the cop, we invite giveaways, a bunch of different events, just to try to build those positive relations. And what we see in the community is that there's a lot more need out there than I think most people realize, and that's an area that definitely needs to not fall by the wayside. Moving forward.
Thank you. Ken.
There certainly are a lot of barriers for our young students going through public education today. Some have learning disabilities, some have physiological or psychological issues that they're dealing with, traumatic events that happened in their life, a death in the family or something like that, just changing from one area of the country to another and making new friends. There's sometimes students that require medical interventions because they have medical problems. And, you know, there's a lot of autism and dyslexia. I have some grandchildren that are dyslexic as well, and they have special needs. And I think these special needs need to be addressed in a manner that gives them an opportunity to reach the maximum of their potential. I think we're doing a pretty good job in the school district. I think we can do a better job in that regard. I don't think these students should be isolated in any way. I think they should be integrated into the mainstream of the general ed as much as possible in overcoming, especially the short-term problems that they might have or consider barriers. I think we can do a better job of it.
Thank you. David.
I would also, I think it goes back to the first question, ensuring that we have the staff and that we can hire and attract, retain the staff to help the barriers with the students that they have. I know, you know, our counselor numbers are crazy, the number that they have to help students is just ridiculous. Oh, no, I think it's like over 500, 600 kids per counselor. But I think also another barrier, if it's potentially what their future is going to be, it's the career academy, and I think that's an amazing opportunity for kids to get out and adventure and try different things that they may be interested in. CT is a wonderful thing for students, and if it's academic barriers, it's hands-on, it's those kind of things as well, which would be so, it's just a great benefit for so many kids. As well, it goes off of ensure our class size numbers are reasonable, low enough where teachers can help the kids at a reasonable time and a reasonable amount of numbers, really, so.
Thank you. Lori Lee.
Currently, we are using our Title I funding to hire teachers that we are using in classrooms to reduce class sizes. I believe Title I funding should be used for interventionists to help kids that are falling behind get caught up. I would also like to know what the English language learner teachers' caseloads are like because those students also have a lot of needs. Special ed caseloads, again, are too large. Counselors, which David touched on, we are actually at 1 to 550 as far as mental health counselors go. The Counselors Association recommends it to be 1 to 250, and that is under normal conditions. We are not under normal conditions. We are coming off of a worldwide pandemic. We have more mental health issues than we have ever seen in school before. We need to get a partnership going. I know we work with Lakeland, but perhaps opening that up to more partnerships.
Thank you.
What I'm really passionate about is empowering the voice of those with special needs. Sometimes their needs get set aside because people think they might not know as much or understand things, but really, they do. And so it's important that we have tools and equipment where they can communicate. And I was talking with a parent who had a child with special needs back in the 90s, and she said there was a program that was very effective in helping her son communicate well, and for some reason, that was taken away. And so I would like to get communication tools that are effective for them to communicate. And then for our English language learners, like I said, I taught overseas for, I was overseas for six years and used music to teach English, and this really accelerated the learning process for the English learners. And I would like to incorporate more interactive learning through music and art so kids can be more engaged and learn languages more quickly.
Okay, thank you. The next question will go to Ken first. And that, this question has, there are several questions that have to do with what's being taught in schools and who should have control over that. So these questions are, should accurate, inclusive sex education be taught in school? Should accurate history be taught in school even though it may be uncomfortable? Should we ban books? And who do you think should have control over what is taught in school and school resources?
Well, that's a lot to put in one minute, as Scott would say, but I'll do my best. As far as banning books goes, there's a policy already in place in the Morehead School District that where a parent sees something in the library that they don't think is appropriate, there's an appeal process for that. I think that's a good policy. I'd like to see that enforced. As far as what's taught in school, certainly the parents have to have primary consideration. In fact, the state statute that said the parents have primary responsibility over teaching their kids. And I'd like to see the parents get more engaged in the process. So there's certain ways we can do that, through the parent-teacher councils. We can put them on, put parents on committees, ask them to be included in certain areas. As far as what's being taught, certainly we need to teach accurate history in the school district. As far as accurate history goes, it's traditional history, some of this new-fangled history that you hear about, the 1619 Project, that's revisionist history. There may be a theory on that, but it's just a theory.
Okay, thank you. David.
Well, there's already state standards of what's being taught in our schools, so that's typically what our teachers, our support staff, administrators are teaching, too. I think the experts in the schools are the teachers and administrators and the people hired who are help coaches to do that. And I really hope that we would keep those professionals in the decision-making of what's being taught around the standards that are already given to them. If, it's just so important that, again, if you're talking about attraction and retaining teachers, it's having their voice heard in what they're doing and how they're teaching. It's an art of teach, to be a teacher. And if you take that control away of how you teach those standards, you just minimize what that love of teaching is for those individuals. And so the voice has to be coming from the teachers, the personnel inside the district, and that's where it needs to come from.
Thank you. Lori Lee.
I trust librarians to stock our shelves and to get books that are what we consider mirrors and windows, where children can see themselves reflected in the literature and where they can take a peek into somebody who's different than themselves lives. I do believe that we should be teaching accurate sex education. I am a 5th grade teacher, therefore my sex education class is very much like body changes, time to wear deodorant, those types of things. That increases as time goes on, but if we don't teach it, who will?
Thank you. Lisa.
So I'm aware of 40-plus books in our school library that have adult content warning on it, and there's extreme sexual content in those books that I believe those are not the books and how kids should learn is through those books. So I would request that those books get immediately removed, and there shouldn't be a process, they should just be removed, like, immediately. As for teaching, I think we need to focus teaching character, creativity, and critical thinking skills. I think it's important for kids to learn history. It's important to learn about Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, Anne Frank. Learn so that we can do better and not repeat those things. But we also have to be aware of the Marxist agenda at stake. It categorizes people and pits people against each other instead of working together to unite. So we just need to be aware of the fruit of what we're teaching to make sure that we're on the right path and unifying as Americans rather than dividing.
Thank you. Scott.
Like Dave mentioned, there's state standards, and there's approved curriculum by administrators. And I believe that the school board should allow those processes to follow itself out. Where I think the school board needs to get involved, it would be where it's, a teacher strays from that. And that would be an extreme situation, which, quite frankly, I've been asked this question many times by many people. And with three students in the district, I've yet to have them come home and say, "You're not going to believe what I got taught today." I introduced some of these theories to my kids in trying to find out from a law enforcement side. The last couple of years haven't been, you know, too cheery for us. So I was trying to find out what they're hearing in the school room about what's going on with law enforcement and what's going on with a lot of the social issues. And they're not getting introduced to them, either my kids aren't listening or they're not getting introduced to them. So I would like to let the curriculum play itself out. As far as the banning of boats, that's a very slippery slope. You know, if one person or one board is deciding what's right and wrong, we mentioned that the library has a process for appealing that. I'm a big believer in letting the processes play out.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will be going to David first. And that question is, "What are your thoughts on the district's responsibility to support free school lunches?"
I don't know, sir, the district's responsibility, it's the state's responsibility, I think. I'm a huge advocate. I was part of Lunch Aid for North Dakota, and we started that a few years ago, trying to get free lunch for students in the state of North Dakota. At that time, also, Morehead did not have a policy about going to collections for lunches or anything either at that time. And so I was really surprised to see that as a potential policy just recently. But no, I don't see that, I'd be an advocate to legislation to try to get free lunch for all students in the public school system. I think it's just so important. If, once you see kids who come to school so hungry, tired, and they have to go try to pay, you know, some of them are already free to reduce, but if they're not even to pay that, it's just ridiculous. And so I highly encourage all of us to support a free lunch for our students who attend K-12 schools and public school.
Thank you. Lori Lee.
Actually, I believe that this is a federal issue, and it actually comes from the FDA. That's who we get our standard payment of how much a lunch costs from. That's who we get our standard payment of how much a lunch costs from. It was the FDA's recommendation to have a delinquency policy put in place. The Morehead School Board recently said, "We will not be putting that in place," so that is good news. But I do not believe that that should fall alone on the district. I know people are looking into how to lobby the FDA so we could get free lunches or at least more reduced payments on lunches. This is a national issue. Everybody is going through this. So, we need to all get together as a country and say, "We believe that students should not have to pay for lunch at school."
Thank you. Lisa.
Yes, I believe no parent should have to go to court over lunch dues. Like, that's just ridiculous. I would recommend, regardless of how the funding comes, that we can be creative as a community and come up with solutions so that our students are fed. And some solution ideas would be that we can have fundraisers to raise funds for these school lunches. We can have volunteer opportunities where students get lunch cards or from their volunteer experiences. And I would like them to be family-based, so that the parents and the kids are doing things together. And then, also, we can, like, with the sports, they go out and raise funds for, they get cookies and coupon books, so a percentage of those could also go towards the school lunch fee. So, there's lots of different ways we can be creative and raise those funds as a community. Like Lori Lee said, we need to work together because schools, kids should not go hungry to school, they should be fed.
Thank you. Scott?
I'm also an advocate for the free school lunches. I think we do need to work with other school districts in the state and in the region to lobby the FDA to make them more affordable, if not just free. You know, they say one in seven Americans struggle with hunger issues, and many of the students that come to school, the food they get at the school is either their only meal of the day or their only healthy meal of the day. And to put any kind of barriers on that or to take food out of the hands of a child standing in line because they have, you know, below zero account should be the absolute last thing. Actually, it shouldn't even be an option, it shouldn't even be the last thing, just should not be even considered. So, any and all ideas open to that, building on what the Morehead Legacy Foundation's already done with raising funds for snacks and milk for the kids that couldn't afford those. I already have great ideas in place in our city and in our district. Really be great to work together with foundations like that to expand those programs.
Thank you. Ken?
I'm quite certain is unanimous agreement that no kid should go to school and be hungry. The learning environment for them to learn, especially for me, I liked to eat, I can tell you, and all my kids did too, and all my 20 grandkids. And they want to have something to eat before they go to school and during school. Now, having said that, I might take issue with the others here on the panel. I think it's a good idea, you know, it's a matter of who pays for the meal. In the past is, now, we don't get COVID funding anymore as we did the last couple of years, there's been means testing. And I think that's a good idea. Some parents are pretty well off, other parents are not. And I think that's a good idea, the parents that can afford to pay for those lunches at the rate that the federal government recommends or the state recommends, I think is a reasonable thing to do. I don't think the taxpayers should be expected to pay, you know, that might be poorer than some of these people that are getting free lunches, should be expected to pay for those lunches. And there's also a reduced lunch rate for people that are kind of in the middle. I think that has worked well in other areas and in the past here, and I'd like to see that continue. In other words, I think it's intrinsically wrong for everyone to get a free lunch and expect someone else to pay for it. Having said that, no, no child should ever be going hungry.
Thank you. We have time for one more question, and this is going to go to Lori Lee first. What should the district do to attract and retain bus drivers?
Well, first of all, I really think if we had seat belts on the bus, we would cut down on 90% of our behavior problems on the bus because they would be strapped into a seat. One thing that we could do is we could add a paraprofessional to the bus routes, because behavior is a big issue on the bus. I know I have seen the camera footage of my own students misbehaving on buses. Another thing that we need to do is we need to raise the pay. They do not get paid enough for what they do. It's a split shift. It's not easy to do. They don't always qualify for full benefit packages. So, we're going to need to make adjustments to the way that we do things if we want to have bus drivers in the future.
Thank you. Lisa.
So, I've noticed there's a correlation to the increase in the CDL requirements to get your CDL. So, to be a bus driver, you need to have a CDL license, and those requirements have become more stringent, and as we've also seen the trend of less bus drivers as a result or correlation to those increased requirements. So, we need to look at what we can do to either make exceptions, to make it so that bus drivers can be removed from those exceptions or... And then, also, we, the pay, we need to pay the bus drivers a full day because of the split shift. They need to be paid for a whole day of work, not just the hours that they work, because they can't just go get a job for two hours in between their shifts or a few hours in between their shifts. So, just to keep that in mind. And then, one thought was to have smaller buses where they wouldn't need the CDL license or smaller vehicles, so that would reduce that requirement, and more people would be qualified to be a bus driver.
Thank you. Scott?
It's probably not going to surprise anybody watching or in the audience here, but as a police officer, I think discipline is one of the biggest issues on the buses. Hearing from the teachers, the bus drivers, and from the officers that are taking assault reports on the buses, or hearing about multiple buses getting turned around to go back to the school, or unfortunately, a couple of years ago, a bus driver saying, "This is not worth it," and just getting off the bus in the middle of the route, all things that should not be happening. You know, our job is to educate kids, and we should be educating them that riding on a bus is a privilege, not a right. So, if you are going to be assaulting kids on the bus and you're going to be causing issues on the bus, you and your family are going to have to find ways to work that out. We shouldn't be punishing the other 50 kids on the bus because one or two are causing an issue. So, and that's the cop in me coming out, but I really think discipline comes, the root of the issue comes down to discipline. There are the issues with the pay issue, I know the complications with the CDL, and I believe Morehead is addressing that, where if you walk in the door to get a job, they will help you get that CDL license. So, there are other ways to do it as well, but it comes down to discipline for me.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, currently, the district is at a competitive disadvantage in the marketplace, and I think in order to solve this problem on a long-term basis, rather than just putting a Band-Aid on it, we're going to have to have a competitive salary in the area and have a competitive advantage. So, that'll be a long-term solution to this problem. As a matter of fact, the contract was just renegotiated just a month or so ago, and, you know, we're having 10%, inflation, we're already short seven bus drivers, now 12 bus drivers. That problem is not going to go away unless we promote a competitive advantage. It certainly isn't going to get any better. And I would favor renegotiating that contract. Instead of giving them a 2% or 3% raise per year, which is what we did in this recent contract for two years, we certainly should give them a better, where they can make at least more money than they can if they get a job at Kmart or, I guess that's out of business now, or at one of the big box stores, and you get my point.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I think adding some kind of more, a few more adults to the bus would be wonderful, so the bus drivers could focus on driving and not behaviors. I think behaviors are the biggest reason why bus drivers aren't coming back, returning to their jobs. So, you know, also having, you know, parents and administrators holding those kids accountable for what they're doing on the bus. Also, I know, you know, support staff, it's hard to find right now. Could those bus drivers be working in the schools during their off time? Could they be filling in as a parrot? Could they be filling in for a different position in the school? I think given, just being creative of what they can be doing outside the hours that they're driving bus would not be beneficial for them as well and seeing interest in building those relationships with the kids outside of that one hour they have on the bus, but seeing them in the schools, working with them, and those things might help that behavior as well with them, so.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the question and answer portion, questions from the audience. And we're going to move next into closing statements, but before that, for the audience here and at home, if you'd like to continue learning more about your candidates, the League has partnered with Forum Communications to present the Vote411.org Voters Guide. That's Vote411.org, to help you learn more about candidates. Stay tuned to the forum and the League Facebook page. Okay. First person to give us your one-minute closing statement is Lisa.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. So, in closing, I am here to represent the parental rights. I'm here to represent the teachers and bus drivers and discipline, and also, education, not political indoctrination. We need to understand that there's more than just black and white, A or B, R or D, that there's other ways of doing things. I've traveled, I've done a lot of music and mission trips around the world, and so, I'm very experienced in thinking and operating in different cultures, and I'd like to bring that to a table, to the table in a way that's positive and unifying, and instead of looking at it either this way or that way, that there's actually a third path that we can all work towards together.
Thank you. Scott?
Again, just thank you for, everyone, for either coming tonight or watching, and especially, again, to the other candidates. This isn't easy. Putting yourself out there is always awkward, and it's been a good experience, and I just want to thank those that are up here and let you guys know I appreciate you doing it. Just want to point out, you know, my qualities that I would bring to the school board just would be just being patient and being a good listener. I've been a problem solver for 22 years. It's what I do, 40 hours a week, usually more than that. You know, going into people's homes and going out into the community and identifying a problem and finding a solution for it. Sometimes it's a short-term solution, sometimes, you know, it's a Band-Aid to fix it temporarily, other times, it's trying to work towards a long-term solution. I have experience leading, not only through the police department, but also in the community as well. I was on the Morehead Youth Baseball Board for five years, one year as president there. I was with the Minnesota Law Enforcement Explorer Association, helping youth work towards a career in law enforcement, three years as a president on that board. I'm on the Fellowship of Christian Peace Officers Board, currently serving as vice president for that and executive director of the Police Athletics League. So, a lot of experience I bring to the board. I hope you consider that when deciding who to vote for.
Thank you. Ken?
I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight and participating. As you know, the school district is facing and will face many challenges the next four years. Improving significantly the scores, you've probably heard and know that the scores of the students in the basics have been steadily going down the last 10 years. That needs to be addressed and fixed. There's budgeting issues, long-term facility management, staff recruitment and retention, and standing in the gap between indoctrinating federal and state political agendas and the community standards the citizens of this district expect for our young people. I think that's very important. I'm prepared to meet these head-on with an open mind, and will attempt to understand the perspective of all the stakeholders. I promise to take every vote very seriously, it's going to affect people, especially our children. Status quo simply isn't acceptable to me. We can again be a great school district, and together, we can make that happen. When elected, I hope to hear from you directly and at the school board meetings. You will be encouraged, not discouraged, from input on all important decisions if you elect Lisa, Nikki, and myself. We have been endorsed by the Minnesota Parents Alliance and the Child Protection PAC. I ask for your support and your vote in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David?
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. As you have heard, there are several issues, concerns, not only in Morehead, but in public education in general. Through my past, I've been an educator my entire career, working with educators, and my priority is going to be to ensure that we attract and retain staff, because that's going to be the vital part of making sure that our kids are learning in our schools. So, with that, as you know, so there's so many challenges that have faced school boards in the last few years. I'm ready for that challenge with my background, with my experience in public education and what I do currently in my job with North Dakota United. I'm ready for that challenge, and I appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lori Lee?
In closing, I would like to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight, the League of Women Voters for hosting, Morehead Community Access for recording tonight's events. Morehead Public Schools is the largest employer in Morehead. I will support our staff to make sure they have what they need to do their job and to feel good about the job they are doing. I will fight for more school counselors and more school psychologists that are very underutilized in our schools currently. I will work on closing the learning gap. Right now, we're at 45% proficiency in math and 42% proficiency in reading. We need to find out what the barriers are to the students that are not able to achieve proficiency. I have been endorsed by Morehead Education, the teachers' union here in Morehead, and I would love to serve as a member of the Morehead School Board. Please consider voting for me.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the candidates that are here, to our audience for attending, to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, Morehead MCAM for recording, and the library for hosting us. There will be another forum right after this one for the next round of candidates for the Morehead School Board. Let's give everyone here a round of applause. Good job. Thank you. I think we will go ahead and get started since our candidates are here. It's a couple of minutes before eight, but we'll go right ahead. Thank you to all the candidates that are here for joining us this evening for this forum hosted by the League of Women Voters. My name is Amy Phillips, and I will be your moderator for this forum. The forum is being recorded by Morehead Community Access TV to be played back at a later time, and our recording will be posted to the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley Facebook page. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. We want to thank the Lake Agassay Regional Library for providing the space tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. It encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. If you would like to learn about the League, please visit our website or find us on Facebook. The League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. As a nonpartisan organization, the League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Before we begin, I'd like to review the rules and procedures. Questions have been submitted in advance by the public on index cards for this event. Questions may have been screened for clarity or combined with similar questions. All candidates will be given an opportunity to address each question. The candidates in this forum and the one, this forum, are all running for the Morehead School Board. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening remark. Each will then be allowed one minute to respond to each question from the audience. At the conclusion of the Q&amp;A period, candidates will be given another one minute for their closing remarks. A timer, Deborah here, will indicate how much time is remaining and will indicate when your time is done. When you hear the bell, that means your time has expired. Please complete your sentence or thoughts so that we may move on to the next candidate or question. The League of Women Voters is proud to provide candidate forums as a platform for voters to learn about who will be on their ballot. The League has invited all candidates on the ballots in contested races to participate in the candidate forums we host. If a candidate is not able to attend, they are welcome to write a one-minute statement that we will read at the forum to the public on their behalf. We do have one candidate who submitted, who is not here, who submitted a statement to be read. I will read his opening statement, and then, we will start down the line with further opening statements. This opening statement is from Kent J. Walford. "My position as a member of the Morehead School Board is to be mindful that every decision affects people. To ensure the best decisions are made, I will work to create and maintain an atmosphere of openness and respect. Thirty-nine years of dedication to education and representing educators gives me a unique perspective in finding solutions to district, educator, and educational issues." Thank you. We will now hear an opening statement from Clint.
Thanks, Amy. I'm Clint Rosland, candidate for Morehead School Board. I'm excited about the opportunities that we have in front of us to help shape and to support our Moreheads' public schools. I have two children in the district, grades seven and 11, and my kids have had tremendous opportunities and experiences in our public school system. My family moved here to Morehead 12 years ago so that we could be part of the schools, and my wife grew up here and... And my wife grew up here, and we're proud to call, call herself Morehead's butts. I was honored to be part of a number of task force groups in, starting back in 2014, with focus around facilities planning, curriculum and career academy development, some strategic planning. And in 2019, I was able to lead the group that helped pass the bond referendum to build the new high school. And proud that we were able to, to get that going, and excited to see the new high school being up. Stop.
Okay. Thank you. Christine?
Good evening. My name's Christine Thompson, and I'm a educator and a former school board member. I was on the school board from 1998 to 2013, when I left to take a job with the district. I worked in community education until about a year ago. I'm running for school board now because I, I feel like we're at a, we're at the precipice of looking out among the, the sort of the field and trying to figure out how it is that we can make all our students get to a place where they can feel successful in life. One of the things that the school board has to do is has to have that vision to make sure that students are equitably engaged in learning so that they can be successful. Having had experience on the board, I know how boards operate, and I, I, I think that I can continue to work towards that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Thank you, Amy. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing the event and the library for hosting as well. And also, thank you to the fellow candidates here, as well as the ones that were in line before us for their interest and for running in the school board. I am Keith Vogt. I am the only incumbent running for reelection this year. I'm a parent of four children who've only known Morehead as home. With my oldest children in high school, we've seen and continued to build many relationships through the school and various other activities that they've been involved with. I want other children and parents to make Morehead their home, to feel welcomed and connected, so that we, they can have an opportunity to attend the great schools that we offer and to continue to make Morehead even greater. As a current member of the school board, I look to continue to listen and serve with integrity and be a bridge between the education and the community. And I'm excited to hear the questions today, and thank you for those who are here today and for those who are watching online.
Thank you. Christine, this first question from the audience will go to you, and each other, the other two of you will also answer it. "As a member of the school board, how would you enable the district to attract and retain qualified teachers?"
I think one way of attracting and retaining, and retaining teachers is by creating an opportunity where teachers are viewed as professionals, are compensated well for the work that they do, and for teachers to feel like they have a sense of success with students. It's also important that we, if you, show how much our community backs our schools by looking at the Career Academy, the new high school, and other, other things that the schools do well. And I think that teachers will come to, they will flock to us because of the things that we have to offer them.
Okay. Keith?
Thank you. With Morehead Public Schools being the largest employer in Morehead and other education institutions, Concordia and Morehead State also, it's really a young education town. There is a lot of competition for good, qualified teachers. And so, there's, you know, it's a different education level from the high school compared to the other two, but we have a lot of competition nearby, and we really need to make sure that Morehead's a place that teachers really want to come and they really want to be invested in the district. I know there's some initiatives to kind of grow your own and to get some students that want to be teachers and to keep those involved in, in the district, and I think that's a great idea. But we also need to continue to, to find those candidates, to find those qualified people who, who want to make Morehead home. There are a lot of people that grew up in rural, rural areas, and they don't necessarily want to move to the Twin Cities, and Fargo-Morehead is a great opportunity for, for the big-city life, but maybe not the Twin Cities metro area. So, we got to kind of look objectively at different ways where we can keep those teachers. Thank you.
Clint?
Well, I like the, the, the community that we have, and I think we need to continue to do more to promote the community that we have. Morehead has historically had long lines of people wanting to work in our school district, and I think it's time to take a step back and reflect on what's causing us to be short on staff and what's, is there any differences that we can overcome to help make us a district of choice for, as an employer? And one of the things that we need to do as an employer is to make sure that we're supporting our teachers and staff, so they have the, the resources that they need when they're in the classroom, the supports they need, the professional development that they, that they, that they are hoping to have. You know, I think there's a lot of learning that we can do after we get past, and as we've gotten past COVID here, things have changed, and we need to take a step back and take a look at what we can do to, to start attracting more of these good candidates.
Okay. Thank you. Keith, this next question will go to you first.
Okay.
And it's kind of a follow-up about teachers related to the amount of time that teachers put into their work and burnout. There are many teachers in our district who do not get their prep time or lunchtime as provided in their contract, and they also put in many more hours than what they are paid. Would you be willing to pay them for their time? How would you address teacher burnout?
Yeah. Teachers have an amazing job. It's truly a passion for teaching those that go into it, go into it for the right reasons. They want to teach, they want to have an impact on kids. I think teachers, absolutely, they're, they're seemingly underappreciated for what they do. They, the wages, sometimes there's discrepancies there. They're, they're impacting our kids and the future of America in ways that we really sometimes don't even comprehend or can't understand. So, I think it's important that we make sure that the teachers have what they need to succeed, and they're paid accordingly, that they're paid a, well, a good wage, a earning wage where they can be sufficient and also continue to do their job. We ask a lot for them to bring in their own things and to add things to this classroom from, from food, from different supplies that they bring in, and really, that's a load that it would be great if it was something that was included or they had some sort of budgetary items. I do know some of the PTACs have a budget to help, but it's typically a very small budget.
Thank you. Clint?
So, teachers do go into this profession because they have such a passion for students, and I know that many of them are not looking to get rich, but we should be compensating them fairly. I think teachers should get an allocation of time to prepare for class, whether, also during the day, but also sometime after class as well. But it's important not to expect the, too much of that, because I think that can lead to more of the burnout and the pressures that they're already facing to continue to, to grow. I agree with Keith on the, you know, planning for what's needed in the classroom, making sure that they are compensated for the supplies they need. I think it's important for us to look holistically as a district, you know, how do we set up our teachers in a better way, especially the new teachers who are just establishing themselves in the classrooms, and, and maybe there's ways to help fund a startup for those teachers to get started and, and, and that it's not quite such a burden right off the, right after they're getting off their education.
Thank you. Christine?
Sure. Having been a teacher myself, I understand that there are times when you have to go the extra mile, and compensation is, that you have a happy student, a happy classroom, a functioning school, but I do think teachers really need to have compensation for their time. I know they're compensated for when they work through their prep hour for, like, substitute teaching, or not substitute teaching, but yeah, filling in for subs that aren't available in the building. They're paid for that, but the time that they spend after school and before school as students, that's uncompensated time. And I think that we have to do a better job of telling teachers that they're valuable, they're professionals, but in fact, we really need to make sure that, that they have something to take home at the end of the day, whether it's just satisfaction or... I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you. This next question will go to Clint first. "There are many students who have barriers which prevent their access to education. How can the district increase providing equitable education for all students in the district?"
I think it's important that we understand who our students are, knowing that we have students that come from 42 different languages. You know, that creates different cultures, and in order to sort of take away those barriers to education in, in Morehead, we have to understand more about where they're coming from and, and who they are. And I think by doing that, we can, we can assist the families. And when the families are engaged, the students can be more engaged as well. And we need help from, from home. You know, it's, it's not just the teachers who are expected to, to reach out and do everything for the, for these students, and I think it's important that we find ways to, to learn more about them and engage their families to, to be more successful in the classroom.
Okay. Christine?
Sure. We're really talking about equity here. We have students from a variety of backgrounds. I, I would agree with that. But we also have schools that operate very inequitably. So, one of the things that I'm really interested in is how the district promotes equity and inclusion. I think that there's the ultimate goal of getting to a place where we can say that our students have equitable results, but we're far from that. If we look at, for example, Robert Asp versus S.G. Reinertson in the district, two elementary schools that are very, very different in terms of student composition and test scores, student achievement is varied. And I think that we really need to say, hey, look, let's look at our elementary schools, and why are some over, overperforming and others underperforming? And I think that we really need to take into account students' race, gender, income, ability, and zip code.
Thank you. Keith?
Thank you. I think Clint and, and Chris both hit on points that are very important, and one is making sure parents are involved and they have invested interest in the children. I know that every situation is unique. We've got 7,400 students, average class size of 571 kids, but each one of those numbers is, is a student, right? And as Chris mentioned, there are some equity differences based on kind of where the school is located, and those do need to be looked at objectively. As far as making sure that those kids are getting what they need, in addition to having involvement from the families, I think it comes with having a connected individual at the school. So, when those kids come to school, do they have that trusted advisor, that trusted person that they can go to, whether that's a resource officer, a teacher, somebody that in the lunchroom that can help them? Just having that person that they make that personal connection to is always one of those things that, that gives a little extra to something that might spark their day and, and help with bringing them in and making sure they have that quality education.
Thank you. Christine, you're getting this question next. This has to do with the content that is taught in schools and who should have control over what is taught in schools. And the specific question is, should sex, accurate, inclusive sex education be taught in school? Should accurate history be taught in school, even though it may be uncomfortable? Should we ban books? Who do you think should have control over what is taught in schools?
Well, that's a, that's a long question, and I only have a minute to answer, so I don't know. Well, I'll start with banning books. I am philosophically opposed to banning books. I believe it further marginalizes voices that have generally been underrepresented. And I think that media specialists are experts. They know what's age-appropriate, and I trust them to make the good decisions that will populate our libraries with a variety of voices. In terms of curriculum choices, there's a curriculum committee. There are standards that need to be taught. I think that I trust teachers to know how to deliver instruction. I trust the district to put forth directives in terms of how the, the curriculum ought to be presented, and I, I think that the district does a really fine job in that regard. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, I think too, as far as, to add to that, I think I also trust teachers. Teachers are in their position to educate our kids. I also believe, as we're hosted in a, a library, that books should be available for the kids. It's up to them to pick which books that they want to read and which books they want to be engaged with. We all know that, that kids have access to content typically on their phone or other devices where, you know, it's, it's less of an issue now. But from a, a standpoint of what should we oversee, I think it's just, as Chris mentioned, kind of that, that curriculum, the quality education that our kids can have, and I don't think there should be any necessarily restrictions. Some of the subjects are hard subjects. We've had history. We've had years of COVID. Those are times where we've had very tumultuous times, and it's just one of those where it's always, it can sometimes be uncomfortable, but I think that I trust our teachers to when to have those conversations and which classes are appropriate to have those conversations and to teach, have them to allow to teach.
Thank you. Clint?
I agree with many what, what these other two have said too. I, I do trust the teachers as well. The teachers understand what is age-appropriate for, for our students. They, they love these kids like they're their own, and they would only want to, to give them what they would give their own children. So, I do trust them. I know they're content experts. My mother-in-law was a first-grade teacher who knew every book that was in her, her own classroom library and, and knew what it was talking about and, and put those intentionally there to build those students up. So, I've seen it in, in that regard. Also, with book bans, I, I agree with Chris. I don't think that we have any right to, to be telling the schools what books to have. We have experts as librarians and media specialists there to help us determine those. And, you know, if our kids are in their reading, you know, that's a good thing. You know, we want them to be continuing to, to grow their minds.
Thank you. Keith, you're getting the next question first. "What are your thoughts on the district's responsibility to support free school lunches?"
I would love to see it more federally mandated. I know that's something that's going to take time. We do have free and reduced lunch available to, to kids. I also know that not every parent is, is comfortable or willing to, to do that, so there's always going to be that, that little bit of a gap. That being said, it would be great if it would be supported, but I think that's, that's something that probably would need to come from some sort of federal funding or federal level. From a local level, I know that we can stand up and help support some of those gaps. There are different programs that we have available that, that do help to, to fill in some of those gaps, but there's, there's always going to be some of those funds that aren't there until it were to be federally funded, which hopefully is something that would happen. But until that it does happen, we need to continue to help where we can with our students and make sure they have that, that food, that ed, because a good education starts with being well-fed and well-nourished, so we need to make sure that they're having those basic needs met.
Thank you. Clint?
Yeah, I agree. The, the food is so important to our students' learning, and when they can be well-fed and well, well-prepared for class, the learning is going to be so much better. So, finding ways to address the, the gaps in funding for students who may not, or families who may not qualify for free and reduced lunch or have not filled out the proper applications for that, finding ways to, to fund those without it coming through the general fund, I think is really important. The schools take on so many of the, the financial burdens already, so I think it's very helpful if we could find some support through the state or the federal to, to make that happen.
Okay. Christine?
Sure. These two have already said mostly what I was going to say, but I will, I will reiterate that I do think it's got to come from a federal or state response. The district, you know, works to, I think, make sure that students have, are, are well-fed, and in the past, the lunch, the prices of lunch have been kept fairly reasonable and low, as a matter of fact. And I think they do a good job of identifying students who could qualify for free and reduced lunch. I, I think that on balance, there's nothing that one can do really to force them to fill out those applications, but I think some gentle prodding by the district could help get those funds directed towards paying off balances, and I think that that is important. I don't think we can, the district can fund school lunches for everybody. Again, I think it's a federal and state problem.
Okay, thank you. Clint, this question goes to you first. What should the district do to attract and retain bus drivers?
This bus driver shortage is a real problem for us in this community, and I think we're seeing that firsthand this year. And I've talked to a lot of people as I've been out door knocking and heard that as one of their big concerns. I think that, you know, wages are one thing to attract bus drivers, but I think there's also some approaches that we would need to look at, adding some additional supports onto the bus so that the bus drivers can focus on driving and maybe some of the behavior issues can be handled by another assistant on the bus. Now, that's looking to add more staff and more people to the bus, but we have to do something to make it easier on the bus drivers or make it more attractive for them to be willing to go through the effort and obtain their bus certifications so they can drive, because it's a critical need for us.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes. The shortage is real. It's community-wide, so it's not just Morehead that's feeling the bus shortage, bus driver shortage. I think base pay needs to be increased. That attracts, but also I do think that you're correct, that we have to create an environment with either adding more staff to buses, sort of a paraprofessional for bus drivers to utilize and so that they can drive the bus and not worry about the behaviors that are going on behind. So it's sometimes not a very attractive job, and I think there's ways of making it more attractive. One is with pay, of course, but the other is with some sort of support for bus drivers as they navigate driving middle schoolers to the middle school, which I wouldn't wish that on anybody, so.
Thank you. Keith?
Well, they covered a lot of the content very well, I think. The bus driver shortage, labor shortage in general is a very tough topic. Teacher shortage, bus driver shortage, there's just a lot going on, a lot to unpack with that. We, Morehead covers a ton of ground when it comes to bus drivers, and there's a lot of activity going on to get them to and from. And, you know, as they were talking, I was kind of thinking, when you put your kid on the bus the first day of school, you've probably never met that bus driver. So how many of you would say, you know, go get into this car with this person and they'll get you safely where they need to go? So there's a trust thing that we have, and it definitely is something that, you know, we're trusting that the district hires those people, so I think they're well-vetted. I think pay increases can help, but we also have more rules on the Morehead side, on the Minnesota side. So we've got direct competition across the river in North Dakota, and a lot of that is, it's a little, seemingly a little bit easier for them to get into bus driving and that type of work. So it's really one of those where we need to make sure we have those qualified candidates, we find those qualified candidates, and then we have the supports in place where they want to stay.
Thank you. Next question will go to Christine first. What are the biggest budget concerns for Morehead Public Schools, given the role of inflation and driving up prices?
Oh, sure. Well, I think one of the things that strikes me as very difficult to wrap my head around personally is how we're going to continue to manage growth. Growth is expensive, and to top that off with inflationary pressures, I think budgeting is going to be difficult for the next foreseeable future. And I think that in terms of staff salaries are going to have to keep pace with inflation. The outfitting of schools and the retrofitting of schools, which have to be done in order to accommodate a growing population, that's expensive. I don't know how much tax capacity exists within the community, but there maybe have to be another referendum of some sort, so.
Okay. Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, I think a lot of where, a lot of the things that we're investing in now is with things that were approved. With the high school, of course, construction costs, had we timed it a year earlier, even two years earlier, it would have been fantastic. It is what it is. A lot of things are going up the way they are. I do know that it's something, as a current school board member, I know that the folks that are behind the scenes, they're working and they're crunching the numbers, they're looking at ways we can save. They've been doing a lot of things to make sure that those costs are reduced, but we still have, of course, a quality school. In the end, we want to have a school that looks like a very quality education, a quality school. We want to make sure that that continues to proceed. But we also want to make sure that we keep pulse and keep pace with some of the salary increases with, as Chris mentioned, with the inflation, and just make sure that they're well-compensated, the teachers are taken care of as well, so that they want to continue to stay and want to continue to teach.
Thank you. Clint?
Like Keith mentioned, the construction costs have gone up quite a bit. I work in, at Sanford, in the construction and planning group, and we've seen twenty percent increases in their construction costs over the last couple of years. So it's a real thing, and it causes us to make different decisions. But they, those are important decisions to consider. What's one of the key things to make sure our buildings will last for a hundred years or more? I think the other things that we're seeing increasing costs that maybe is less visible are insurance. Those are going up. It's the supplies in the classrooms. You know, I was reading a story about a teacher that teaches one of the, like a food class, and their allocation for supplies was burned up in the first month because of extreme cost of the food, the rise in cost of groceries. And so even looking to the community to help support some of those so they can get through the school year, because the budgets don't always match the inflation and the timing of them. So lots of little things, and I think they add up to be big problems for us.
Thank you. Keith, this question comes to you first. Do you see safety issues at Morehead schools? If yes, what should be done?
I think safety is one of those things, it's paramount for our kids when they go to school, that they're fed, they're educated, and they feel safe. I think if you talk to any high schooler, they will tell you that there are restrooms within the facility that they don't use, and it's really hard. I didn't understand it until my own kids went to high school that that was really happening, and it's just one of those things where, you know, they're starting to look at and put things in place to make that better, but there are still places where, you know, kids maybe don't feel safe. I know there's some things where kids are not getting along and fighting, and a lot of that behavioral things, we need to kind of look at what's happening behind the scenes. But from a school standpoint, we need to also dig, be able to dig into that a little bit as far as, you know, where can we help? Is this something that we can look into with the resources we have? Or do we need to look for additional resources to help? Because we want to make sure that kids feel safe, and if there is a threat or any sort of incident like that, we need to take that seriously as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Clint?
I think Morehead has done a nice job in the past few years to establish some safer schools from outside threats. I think there are some internal psychological safety things that our students need to, do we need to get our arms wrapped around that as well? And like Keith mentioned, it could be bullying, it could be, you know, threats that are going on within the bathrooms or, you know, those types of peer pressure types of situations as well. So it exists. I think it's existed since the beginning of time, but we cannot turn a blind eye to what's going on, and we have to continue to address those.
Thank you. Christine?
Sure. I think the school district's done a really good job at protecting the schools and the students from outside threats. Again, looking at the, what goes on in the hallways, in the bathrooms, and in common areas, it's an issue. And my son, for example, was bullied a lot. He's much older now, and he, but when he was in school, bullying was, in fact, a real big issue. I think that it still is, and I'm saddened by that. But I think that some of the things that we can do as a district is to make students feel included. And if some of the behaviors arise because of the lack of integration of students within the school system or school district or school building, I think that those things need to be addressed, and we'll see behaviors drop down.
Thank you. Clint? I think we have time for two more questions, and this next one is going to you first, Clint.
Okay.
There is a practice of separating students in binary gendered groups for classroom activities. Are you willing to let this continue or develop a policy to ban this practice?
That's a good question. I guess I'm not familiar with them doing it now, but if it's happening, I think we can find ways to structure our classroom activities so that we aren't separating people by how they feel like they're identified. It's not something that I've had to deal with in our own personal lives, but I just don't think it's that important. I think it's important we look at students as individuals and that we can allow them to continue to develop on their own and figure out, figure out life without us having to cause any additional challenges with separating them in a specific way.
Thank you. Christine?
Sure. I agree with Clint. There's other ways of grouping students without having to rely on gender or distinctions along gender lines. I think that there are opportunities, I think, for the district to look at questions related to gender and gender identity and not necessarily develop a policy, but have conversations. I think it's a much, it's a symptom of a much larger issue. And I think that we need to embrace discussions, just as we do about race, and talk about them, talk about gender and race and other uncomfortable subjects, and come up with some sort of understanding about how the district wants to have those kinds of conversations and how classrooms should have those conversations and how parents and teachers should have those conversations. Thank you.
Keith?
Yeah, I think for the most part, people want to be and they want to learn with everybody else. There might be times where it makes sense to have students separated, but I think for the most part, when you look holistically at education, generally they want to be amongst their peers, they want to be amongst everybody else. So I think that keeping kids together as much as possible is probably the best thing. There may be some situations where that might be an exception. I even think if you look at the Career Academy where we have individual stalls, there's no men's and women's bathroom, it's individual stalls where anybody can go into those stalls. It also helps raise that security issue of being safe in a bathroom when there's only one stall and you go in and you go out and that's it. But I think for the most part, kids want to learn together and they want to be with other people, they want to be amongst their other peers. With some exceptions, there might be times where it might make sense to pull a kid out or pull a child out to have them learn in a different environment.
Thank you. This last question from the audience will go to you, Christine, first. Currently, class sizes in Morehead have caps set at kindergarten twenty-four students, first grade's twenty-six, second twenty-six students, third grade twenty-seven students, fourth grade twenty-nine students. What are your thoughts or opinions on these numbers?
I think that those caps are a little on the high side. I personally, philosophically, as an educator, I believe in smaller class sizes. And I understand why it's necessary to raise the cap. And I think the cap has risen over the years. I'm not sure about that statement, however, but I recall that class size caps have increased. And I think that learning happens when students are comfortable, and those classrooms aren't made for, you know, twenty-six students. That, and so that they can be in a place, they have their own space, their own, their own room to work. It's more quiet when you have fewer students, it just makes sense. And I know that we don't have much choice with a growing student population and a fixed number of classrooms. Sometimes those caps need to be exceeded.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, I think, I love the word, Chris or Christine?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. I've known her as Chris, so anyway.
It's fine.
But I think making kids comfortable is always one of those things that is definitely passionate for teachers. You go into any of these, when teachers first come into the year and they set up their classroom, I mean, it looks like you're walking into somebody's house. So they really make it personal. That being said, some of the caps do get high, and I know it's been an issue, it's always been an issue. We're a growing district. Again, the number's five hundred and seventy-one is the average number of class sizes. We've got a couple of classes plus six hundred, and it's very tough when you start talking numbers like that that go through the system, and the number before it might be a little bit considerably lower. And so you've got this bubble of classes that you need to accommodate for. And I think the district does a really good job with that, but I'd love to see class sizes smaller, but I know there are financial challenges behind it. It's not as easy as just flipping a button and saying, we're now going to have twenty or eighteen kids in a class. There's a lot of logistics behind it.
Thank you. Clint?
I think the caps are important, and we need to protect our teachers from having too many students in their classes. Obviously, the smaller, the better in these classes. Teachers will, are happy to tell you that, you know, they're excited when they have less than the cap, because the less students they have, the more time they get to spend with each individual student. And if we're honest, it kind of controls the chaos, especially at some of these younger ages when student attentions are, their attention spans are short. So can it be lower? Maybe. Should it be? But at least we have a cap so that it can protect our teachers from continuing to just add more as students come. And I think Morehead is in better shape than some of our peers across the river. So that is a good thing. We're in the right direction. And so I'm in favor of having a cap so that we can protect our teachers.
Thank you. This concludes the question and answer portion of this forum. Thank you, candidates, for your responses. And before we move into closing remarks, for the audience here and at home, if you'd like to continue learning more about your candidates, the League has partnered with Forum Communications to present the votefor11.org voters guide. Votefor11.org. It tells you everything you need to know about voting. For our closing remarks, we will start with Keith first.
Thank you, Amy. The past four years, I've served on the Morehead School Board, and two of those years have been as treasurer. I've had the sincere privilege to vote for yes for things like the Career Academy and the High School, both of which were strongly supported by the community. Of course, some of the folks here are a big part of that. Looking back, when I was on the board the last four years, only two months were before pandemic altered our lives. And as I continue to kind of look back and reflect, I realize that there's been a lot of, I've learned and I've grown, but I realize that there's so much more left to learn. And four years is kind of a good time to start to get some traction, and I'd like to really continue to make more connections. And if elected, that's what I want to continue to do, is to cultivate those relationships, add new connections, continue to listen to people, and serve the board with an open and honest mind. Please make sure that your voice is heard during the election, and I'd love to hear, I'd love to ask for your vote for Keith's vote on November eighth. But please make sure that you're educated, you're informed, and you vote for the candidate who you believe will do the best job. Thank you.
Thank you. Clint?
Amy, thanks for having us, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. And thank you to both of you for the time we've been able to spend together. You know, I did have a chance to serve on all these task force groups and as volunteers in my kids' classrooms. You know, my employment as an engineer in my normal job, I think, gives me an interesting look at things. I work in continuous improvement. My brain is always focused around what can we do, how can we learn, how can we, can we do things better? And so I'd like to use that analytical skill set and work hard to understand our needs so that we can make common sense decisions as things come up. I want to continue to work towards getting every student great opportunities like mine have had and pursue my passion for our Morehead schools. I appreciate your vote on November eighth.
Thank you. Christine?
Sure. In the, the bottom line is it's all about kids. And doing what's best for kids is the motivation that has caused me to run for school board again. And I think that if we look at the future of our community, it really depends on having a well-educated workforce and good a well-educated workforce and good students who grow up to be thinking, caring, employable adults. And I think that's what the schools need to really focus on. I said at the beginning that I believe we're on a precipice, and we are. We really have the opportunity here with the new schools to make a leap and create a community that can sustain itself over time. What we really want to do is, we really want to have good citizens to live in our community, to have children, to populate our schools, and continue to perpetuate the good things that our district does. Thank you. And thank you for hosting us, and thank you too for a good conversation.
Wonderful. Thank you again, candidates. Thanks to the audience for attending. Thank you, League of Women Voters volunteers. Thank you, Morehead MCAM and the library for hosting us, and let's give our candidates a round of applause.